How you doing? Same to you.
You look good. That's you. Happy New Year. Let me sign on here. And then we'll get going. Supposedly, our video is supposed to work. That's what Connie said. It was working this afternoon. Huh? Who? Oh, whoa, okay.
I'm guessing yes.
It's the last night of PEG for them to get their credits.
Oh, I would imagine. God bless America. I know. We can always...
Next to me, you won't have anybody.
No. Sad, isn't it, Bob? Isn't it sad?
I just saw your campaign manager. Now go tell him I beat you and your mom at a...
Well, that's okay. No, they... Pam told me.
Ryan and... Yeah, and my... I'll push it back a little bit. But I gotta tell you, the other time I beat you because I was going to...
Hey, Michael. Eddie?
We're always ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and... Good evening.
Good evening.
Packed house tonight. I'd like to ask God that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Sarah Simkuski, a 1962 graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. John P. Wasnick, a senior, a 1942 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Wayne A. Herdic, a teacher from the North Syracuse Central School District. Jean Denny Bealy, a retired teacher of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Camille Accarino, a retired teacher of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a very difficult week for me personally in that three of these people I personally knew and worked with. And I'm going to talk about each of them if I could for a few seconds. The first lady that passed this week was Camille Accarino. She was a third and fourth grade teacher at Allen Road when I was very young and didn't know as much about teaching as I did as I retired. She was my mentor. She loved children. She always had a smile on her face. And Allen Road was her home. And it's a big loss for our community and to our school district. The second person that I've known is Wayne Herdic. Wayne was a math teacher at the high school, CNS, and also a math teacher at the junior high. His wife also was a math teacher. She was the chair of the math department at CNS. She passed two years ago. Wayne was a quiet person, kept things to himself. But I got to know him on the bowling, in the bowling league. As a member of the bowling league for 20 years, he was part of my team. He always brought the best out of me in bowling. And I will never forget him for what he did in that. The last person I'm going to talk about is Jean Bealy. Jean Bealy was that model teacher. When Main Street was kindergarten through fifth grade building, Jean was a fifth grade teacher. The year that Pitcher Hill closed, I went to Main Street. I was transferred to Main Street. I became a fifth grade teacher. She became the school librarian. Jean was, again, a mentor to me. Jean believed in math games, reading games, making children enjoy education. For my 30 years-plus teaching, I used her games. They were in my classroom the last year I was teaching. I wonder if Sandy would like to say a little something about Jean.
I...I love Jean. I used to jokingly say, "I want to be you when I grow up," Jean. Jean was a wonderful teacher and a fabulous librarian, very active in the reading council. And I always would enjoy the workshops that she would put on for us. She was a person who lit up a room. She was the first librarian to automate her library. She brought computerization into the libraries. She opened the library at Smith Road in the summer so that kids could have access to the library and do things. And the thing that we enjoyed most about Jean was her storytelling. She took part every year in the Clever Gretchen Conference in storytelling up at Syracuse University. And every year, she would have the kids in Smith Road have their storytelling contests. And lots of times, they would come to the board and tell their stories. They told them from memory. And it was passing on oral traditions. She was an incredible lady. And she moved about nine or 10 years ago to be near her children as her health, you know, and she was aging. She wanted to be close to her family. Missed her very much then. But it was always good to know she was out there. She was still volunteering in the local elementary school. But three wonderful people. I knew Camille quite well, too, and always enjoyed going into her classroom. She retired in 1993, which was a landmark year for me and was very kind to me at a time when I was going through a rough time. But sad. Time passing, people getting older. But they were wonderful people, wonderful teachers, and they made terrific contribution to what...
Thank you. Before we move on, I'd just like to mention that Michael Marizio is out of town and excused from this evening's board meeting, as is Scott McClintock. Before I give you the good news, I might steal a little of your thunder. But on behalf of the Board of Education as a whole, I want to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to the superintendent and to Annette Speech and her team and to John Carrilla and David Cordone. We were approved for our APPR today. Thank God. Great job. And it's a direct result of all your hard work and dedication. When people would ask me out in the community, "Well, jeez, I'm reading all the articles and you're...you know, you don't have yours done. You don't have this." And I tell them that our people were in the forefront of this process. They were in Albany when this first started. We were probably one of the most proactive school districts relative to this whole scenario to get it moving and to have input. You know, it's due to the hard work of our bargaining units and the hard work of our staff that embraced this and said, "Well, we're not going to have the state dictate to us what we have to do. We're going to be involved with the process and we're going to kind of set parameters and have them utilize our expertise so that when all of this is said and done, it really could be something that means something and is worthwhile." So, again, we had $4.7 million at risk. You know, we...not like other school districts, I believe the process was a little bit dicey where you would have to go back and forth a little bit with the state. And I closed my house. I don't think I signed my name as many times as I had to sign it this last couple of weeks. But thank you for all the hard work for a job well done. Thank you very much. Dr. Dice? Good evening. I'm sorry for stealing that. I know you were probably going to say something.
Good evening. We have a couple people to acknowledge, and then I'll come back and do some additional comments for good news. Good evening again. First, we'd like to acknowledge three of our students for their participation in the district-wide spelling bee. First is Zachary Culdrin. Second is Kylie Bailey. And third is Hannah Scalisi.
Dr. Dice honored for spelling bee in our district or county?
In our district.
Okay, because there were more than three, I believe.
No, actually, for the January 19th Onondaga Community College event.
Okay. That's...they went one step farther.
Right, they went to the next level. So we'll make sure that our students get their certificates. Next, we'd also like to acknowledge DECA. DECA is a student organization whose program of leadership and personal development is designed specifically for students interested in marketing, management, and entrepreneurship. We have a number of certificates and a number of students who placed first, second, third, fourth, and fourth. And so we'll just call off their names. And if you're here, please come up. Nick Doran.
Elizabeth Miles. Elise Towers.
Also, as Pat talked about, I do want to acknowledge and just say thank you so much to our team. Annette was the lead on the hard work that we put in with submission for APPR and to our union leadership, John and Dave. Thank you for your support. You were basically on call every time the state said that we needed to do a revision. You were at the table, engaged in that conversation. So, thank you for your hard work, your commitment to ensuring that we, as a district, did not put our students and our teachers in jeopardy of losing $4.7 million. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Coach Derek Bigford. Yesterday, earned his 300th career win. So congratulations to you, Derek. And last but not least, Happy New Year.
Okay, our first presentation is the Roxboro Road Elementary School BPT presentation. Jackie and crew, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jackie Grace, the principal at Roxboro Road Elementary School. And I'm joined this evening with Don Matthews, one of our wonderful fourth grade teachers, who's also our BPT chairperson, yes. And I'm joined by Brian Noel, another fourth grade teacher, who is one of our data experts in the building. So I'm very happy to be here. Dr. Dice, board members, good evening. Basically, we are showing this very first picture here because these are the faces that inspire us absolutely every day. And one of the things that we ask ourselves with any decisions in our building is, is it best...is it in the best interest of our children? Is it good for children? And will it benefit our children? So, these faces are the ones that motivate us and get us up in the morning and coming to Roxboro Road Elementary School. We're using, of course, our North Syracuse Strategic Plan as our guide for our presentation this evening. And the first thing, of course, the first goal, is that we basically are concerned always with how it is that we prepare for our students and how it is that we are helping them to grow and to develop and to learn. And our second goal is how it is that the adults are mobilized to help our students to learn through professional development, collaboration, and of course, accountability. So our first, building goals. And let me just say also that our building goals are building-wide, from kindergarten through fourth grade, where we're understanding that our issues are systemic and pervasive. And so our building goals are for our whole school and the school-wide. So our strategies, our goals, our action plans are K4. So our first ELA goal is to increase our students' opportunity during the day for reading, embedded reading throughout the day. Very important because we can't do anything. Our students cannot do anything or learn anything unless we are good readers, learning, reading to do, reading to be, reading to...for enjoyment. And we're really working very hard for our students to understand how important reading is and how it is that they can grow and develop to become great readers. And so we're also encouraging and promoting that reading with our families and getting them to realize that we really need our students to read more, not only for comprehension and understanding, but basically one of the fundamental life skills. So I'm going to ask Brian to start us off with some of our data work on ELA.
The first slide with that are the third grade and fourth grade ELA tests. See, the third grade's on the left. The way this is set up is based on our Ames...the new program of Ames Web. And they have their...the kids who need to really improve that they're performing the worst at the top. And that's what it is in red. That's really highlighted. The yellow are the ones that are in...are level twos, still not meeting the grade of what's required by the state. The green and the blues are those who are achieving three or fours. As you can see, the kids are being fairly consistent year to year. And one of our strategies is we're trying to find out what can we get these kids to do in order to start moving them up more into the level threes and fours. But as you can see, they're all fairly consistent. One thing I'd like to show you is the level ones are decreasing from year to year. Last year is a tough year because it's a new testing system and the whole...you know, not going to go into discussion of that. But the next slide deals with the Ames...the new Ames Web programming that we've looked at. And based on the discussion from the representatives of the Ames Web company, the reading comprehension component is tied very closely. This statistically shows that the performance on the state tests is tied...is very consistent with how they perform on the fluency part of the reading test. And in kindergarten, first grade, that's more letter recognition. But the second, third, and fourth grade, these are all the reading comprehension components that...from the Ames Web testing done back in the fall, in September. And as you can see, the green area are those kids who are currently at grade level. The ones in yellow are those at risk, and the ones in red are significantly below where they should be in reading at this point in time. And you can see it's cross-grade level, first, second, third grade. We have a population that is very low in what their abilities to read. And this is supported further by our Fanta's and Pennell. According to this, we have over 70% to 80% of our kids are below grade level of where they should be based on the Fanta's and Pennell testing we did in early October. So a lot of our strategies are geared to try to get more reading opportunities for these kids. A lot of our research has shown that kids from the population that we have, reading is not done at home. And so that's one of the things we're really trying to promote. And that's what our statistics is telling us, that they need to have more reading opportunities. I mean, I have one last slide. This is our economically disadvantaged population. And you can see their numbers are a little more skewed towards the three...low on the threes and fours. These are the state tests, third and fourth grade combined. And you can see the level twos and ones, over 60% of our...are not making the grade. And that supports the fact that we need to really get them reading a lot more.
We're doing various things, trying to devise strategies and to develop the skills of our students and to communicate with parents and teachers. So, Don, you gonna...
One of the first things that we did was to take a look at where our students are at their weakest points. In our ELA data analysis, we found out that new vocabulary words, being able to understand them, being able to use them, was a challenge. One of the other issues that we found was activating prior knowledge. There's limited life experiences, which adds to the difficulty of the students being able to activate prior knowledge. Main idea in supporting details continues to be one of our challenges. Unfamiliar text, as well as sequencing events. As a building, we decided on several strategies to use throughout the year. And again, these are all adapted at the different grade levels. Teachers take these ideas and then adapt them to fit their students in their classroom. Not to read them all off to you, but some of the big things that we are using are the guided reading groups, shared reading, Reader's Theater. We do a lot of partner reading, listening centers, Dear Time, Read Alouds. And again, those are all...those are strategies used throughout the entire building.
So as you can see, and there are many strategies there. And some of our teachers...most of our teachers are trying to, in various ways, implement this throughout the day so that our students understand how important reading is and so that they can...so that the variety of strategies will, in fact, pique the interest of some or all of our students. We have an arduous task, and we're trying everything that we can to help and support our students in that way. We're going to move on to our building goals for math. And one of the things that we know is that our students really, truly need to know their math facts. And so automaticity is important. So we're talking about our students' fluency. We're doing more fluency games and more math activities on a daily basis, making sure that our students are learning math and that it's fun and that it's engaging. And we're also looking to improve our students' identification and utilization of different units of measurement. So things like time, graphs, using scales, all of those things are important, that we are helping our students to understand that in their daily lives, we're using math and, you know, really just trying to help them understand that in terms of functioning in this world, they need to know math and be able to understand and function with math. And moving on to our data.
Again, we started out with the ELA...excuse me, the math test for third and fourth grade state test. One of the things I'd like you to notice is the level ones decreased from third to fourth grade. If you look at 2010, 2011, that class was...in fourth grade would be the 2011-2012 year. And you'll notice the level ones went down and the level fours went way up. So...and that's consistent, that each year, the level ones go down, the level fours go up. So we're showing growth with our students in mathematics. Going to the next one. Again, this is using the Ames Web. And the computation module for the Ames Web was the one that was statistically linked to the performance on the third and fourth grade test. And you can see we have a very large percentage of kids at risk in the reds. And in the yellows are kids that are borderline where they will fall. And our goal is to try to provide opportunities for them to use math in class, to try to move more of them up into the green areas, the tier ones, which are the kids who will be more successful. These are economic disadvantaged. Again, you can see that it's close to six...you know, 50% to 60% of the students are struggling with math. But still, we are having some success there.
So when we looked at the data analysis for our math test results, one of the biggest things that we noticed was students were having difficulty identifying and using the various forms of measurement. Elapsed time was also an area of weakness. The symbols greater than, less than, and equal to, both with and without a number line, and being able to compare whole numbers as well as unit fractions. So when we looked at our strategies, we decided to break it down into strategies specific to fact fluency, math fact fluency, some math games that we could use to encourage math fact fluency, and of course, some measurement strategies as well. And again, these are also strategies that we are using throughout the entire building, adapting them to each grade level. adapting them to each grade level.
What we're, we're trying to do is just embed math throughout the day as well. We have, uh, one of our AIS teachers that actually, I saw in the breakfast line with, uh, flashcards, just, you know, busy, uh, trying to get our students to think, um, more quickly about the facts, more quickly about answers, more quickly about problem solving. So there are various things that we're doing in the building to get our students to, you know, understand that learning is and should be at all times. Next, we are going to go into the realm of our, uh, is it transient students?
Well, just some other statistics that affect what we deal with on a daily basis, things we have to try to overcome. The first one is our AIS numbers. The ones in green are those that are currently receiving, uh, recent, uh, AIS assistance from grade one to four. The ones in red, um, are not receiving the services yet, have statistical data that supports them needing services.
So we just really do not have the, the?
Right. We don't have the resources right now to do it. We have 209 that are currently receiving, 179 that have qualified, for a total of about 388 students that need. That's ELA math. Next is our transient population. Each year we gain about 100 students and lose about 100. So that's about a sixth of our population is changed every year. And that's cross-grade levels. And that's something we have to do, kids coming in and out, that we have to accommodate. Attendance is below the district average. And it's all. And discipline issues. We have, and over the last three years, we've had almost 140 disruptive reckless behavior. And that's, comes out to almost one a day, one every two days. But to add in all the others, there are at least two to three major, um, dis, have to be dealt with. It takes away from class time, principal time.
So the thing about our, um, transient population, as well as our attendance and discipline issues, is that we really also see an, uh, increase in the need for counseling in our school. You know, we, we, we're not only talking about our students, but also our families as well. So it's certainly, you know, we're just looking at the whole child and the social, social, emotional piece is certainly what we have to, one of the things that we have to contend with and make sure that that's taken care of so that we can be about the business of the academics. And so, um, our third, um, strategic plan, district, uh, strategic plan has to do with families and really empowering them so that they have knowledge of what it is that school is about and how it is that they themselves are, are, are students' first teachers. And they really are partners in, uh, the education of their child. So we're looking to increase the dialogue between parents and the school and, and our staff and making sure that our, all of our students are successful.
Our goals for parent involvement were to be able to increase the involvement of our parents in our PTG, as well as to be able to increase the attendance at our building wide events. Some of the strategies that we're using, um, we do use the back-to-school picnic, our PTO events. We do some skits during our Friday morning program as well. Our open house, our website, uh, teachers have their own webpages to make, um, information available, a monthly newsletter that goes out, and, um, any homeschool connection pieces.
And our goals, our character ed goals are to decrease our number of students with discipline referrals and also to increase awareness of our DASSA, our dignity for all students, making sure that our staff, our students, and our families are aware of what DASSA is and how it is that it affects us all, um, in our school. And some of our strategies, um, here, I can just, uh, share with you, one of them that I think works quite well is our PAL program. And that's where our teachers, um, many of our teachers have adopted a student. Um, the, the students were recommended by the teacher and at some point during the week, um, the staff member spends time with that student just to build relationships and to let the student know that we care about them and we want them to be successful. And all the other programs, as you can see, are also, um, implemented within the school so that we can build character and so that we can really hone in on, uh, making sure that our social, uh, emotional needs for our students are met. And some of the extras, uh, we have our hallway incentive program. We have jumpstart homework. Homework is indeed an issue, so many of our, um, teachers will start homework before the buses actually pick our students up. Um, we have the runners club early in the morning. Of course, we have our elves program that are helping our kindergarten students that , uh, have, um, needs that have gaps in their learning. Uh, we have our red, white, and blue crew. We have lots of volunteers that are coming in. We have our bear cubs, which is one of our teachers that are, that's actually has a program that helps students, um, with preschool, um, skills. So we have lots of things that we're doing within our building to really try to help our students in terms of the whole student. And I think that's, uh, extremely important with our population. Again, here are the faces that we look at every single day and here are the faces in, in which, um, we get up every morning so that we can meet the needs of our students. Um, I would like to thank all of our BPT, our building planning team. Uh, I would like our staff to please stand that came to support us tonight.
A lot of them.
Thank you very much. These are hardworking people in our building, just so you know. And I wanted to just share with you a quote that I thought was very fitting for the hard work that we do, uh, at Roxborough Road. Here it is. "If kids come to us," meaning educators and teachers, "from strong, healthy, functioning families, it makes our job easier. If they do not come to us from strong, healthy, functioning families, it makes our job more important." And that's what we feel at Roxborough Road. And we thank you for this opportunity.
Couple of questions.
Question?
Go ahead. Uh, what is Dear at bus time?
Dear is, um, drop everything and read.
Oh, okay.
That's another one of our, our programs in which we are trying to embed.
I know what drop everything and read is.
Yes. Trying to embed that reading.
Dear, connect in brain. The, the other thing, when you, you gave, uh, statistics for transient students, and I understand this is an issue. Do we, uh, track where the students are going? Are they, are they moving to another school in the district? Are they moving between the city and our school district or, or other districts? Do we keep?
It's, it's, it's basically all of that. Sometimes we get students that actually come back two and three times. So they, they're moving, you know, the families are just moving and their family's in crisis. And so, yeah.
I am.
Sandy, they, they tend to move. But, like, uh, this is great. County coming in. They, they tend to.
And I'll just have to add that, um, our counseling program is designing a program for these transient families so that whenever they come to us, that we have, um, an introduction into what our school is all about, so that they feel a sense of comfort and so that they know that they belong and we want them there.
That also was, was the object of my question, to see if there was something that we could do both for the kids on the way out and on the way in to kind of ease those trends.
Absolutely. Yeah.
On the way out, it's not possible.
Sometimes we, we don't know when they are going, but we do the best we can to try to support them.
I understand. Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
I, I have no questions, which surprises Mr. Carbone. But I, I do have some comments because I do volunteer at your school. I want you to know, I went up to the high school about a month ago and talked to, um, a class about, um, my background education. And every student in that classroom comes to your school, I believe, in the Big Brothers and Sisters program. And now, there wasn't one negative comment. Every one of them's excited. They talked about the teachers at Roxborough. What a great program. These are many students that want to be teachers in the future, and you have given them a program that they love. Your seventh grade tutors, I see in the hallway every Friday afternoon and I talk to them. What a great program. Students coming from Roxborough Road Middle School, and I don't know how many days a week you do, but I see it on Friday afternoon.
They come almost every day, borrow bridges, so it's.
And there, you are an exciting students that, uh, might be interested in education and becoming teachers or whatever, working on one-to-one with kindergarten first graders. Great program. And true to my heart is the red, white, blue crew. Uh, many of those students have fathers, mothers, brothers, uncles that are in Afghanistan, Iraq. And these students collect items and go once a year to the military courtesy room. If anybody has not been to the military courtesy room, it's one of four or five in the United States of America located in Syracuse, where volunteers 24/7, 24 hours a day, um, meet with our servicemen and give them, uh, food, comfort. And your kids go there once a year, and I know that's a magnificent program. But the, the thing I wanted to really, uh, talk about is your school. You have many problems. You have, you talked about the, the movement of students. I believe your poverty level is way over 60%, but you would not know it in your building because all children learn in your building. I see it at every Friday. I know when I walk in other days that the staff, there are special needs kids in that school, more than I see in some of the other schools. Some are in wheelchairs, some, um, one has a, a, a dog that leads the student, um, doesn't affect the other students. You should be patting yourself on the back. I know you don't do that, that much down there because sometimes your scores don't show that. But scores aren't everything. And I say it to every teacher here, you are the best. I see it every Friday and thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, Bold Systems.
Lot of energy I have.
Wait for her to start. I'm waiting for her to start.
Up down?
Up down.
Hey.
There you go, ma'am.
Thanks. Thank you for your time, for allowing me to present this evening. My name is Diane Cummings. Systems and brief overview of what we do. For more than 23 years, we've been helping school districts with their budget election, uh, prior, during, and after. We've had a, an outstanding partnership with Bosse's for over 20 years, so it is a. And actually, right now, we're in 117 school districts. We just, uh, a month or so. Libraries, towns, villages, um, and it actually started with the libraries, towns, and villages. I would love if you could do this for our school districts. And that's how we started. And actually, now, we specialize in the school budget election. What do we do and why do we do? Manual, uh, tasking is slow and many times it's inaccurate. What we do is computerize the whole process, streamline. Most effective for your district. Makes it a pleasurable experience for your parents and it gets more of your parents, most importantly, involved in the election. Since it is a direct result of their children's education, it's, uh, an important factor. Okay, what do we do that makes us better than the manual system? We print up these books. And these books are in strict alphabetical order. Everyone in your county and your in-district voters, those are people who are not registered with the county, but they're still, they live in the district and they're eligible to vote. And we also carve out your school district. Board of elections cannot do that. They can only provide you with assembly and. We can carve. Vote in your district. Many times, people vote for the general election in a different place. They might vote maybe here at the high school, but they reside in, say, East Syracuse, Manoa. So what we do is we carve it out and we make sure everyone who is supposed to be voting for your budget is doing that. You reduce your costs and manual labor. We can reduce your staff by up to 50% just by, uh, computerizing the system. It eliminates voter fraud because, like I said, we're getting all the information mostly from the county, name and address. It reduces voter wait times because they just come in. Their name is easily found in these books. They sign their name, they vote on the machine, and they're out. It's a long process. They're not going to come and vote. If there are long lines, they're going to look at their watch and head out the door. We want to promote more of people voting. Okay, um, we can, um, it's very accurate, it's very secure, and you can, uh, view your turnout from, uh, any computer. They are more, actually more accurate than the county board of elec. And, and that of the district or some. You can update that. Board of elections will. There is a little window there for voter fraud. Somebody can come in and vote on that deceased person's name, but, um, we, we care of that for you. Uh, we automatically purge your inactive voters. Uh, the rule is if you have not voted in a county election or a school election in four years. Every year, we purge out those voters. So, and, and in seconds, you can verify a voter's eligibility. Eliminating the, the, uh, threat of lost or damaged. Uh, I can vouch for that from being from Long Island. Many of our districts had total losses of their records, but it was retained at the Bosse Center. Foil reports or any kind of. Seconds brought up. Excel, Excel, if you need to, to. Move it around a little bit to look for specific. A data file. Very easy for your district to report. And if you don't see anything in the common reports, you can make your own. Get your own by just choosing the data fields. Um, it will show by school how your parents are coming out. Saying, well, maybe our, our elementary school is coming out. The next concert to get more of your parents and staff voting on Election Day. This is an hourly report when they come in. The name is scanned by these handy dandy pens. Costs less than $100 and it's a one purchase. A voter comes in, the bar. Now you can see, as far as scheduling goes, well, we really don't need, uh, that many people working between the hours of six. Nobody really comes out to vote between those hours, so let's shorten our polling hour. It helps you become more cost-effective in the long run. This is the stats of your whole community, age, by gender, by category, and it gives you the key information that you need to, um, like I said, get more people. Very flexible. We have many different scanning and printing options. Customize. We have 117 different. Customize. We have 117 different ways large districts like Utica City, districts like Southampton, Island, which only has about 300 people turning out for their vote. Weather reporting, how the weather affects your voter turnout. We have unique mapping software where you can see, well, our generation comes That mapping software many by your district for many other different tasks, not just voting. On-site training, we comp which usually So we train them, and it's actually easier for them to use this scan pen and draw a straight line than it is to write, hand-write name and address. How do you spell that last name? Things like that, and there's less Also monitor all day long 8:00 AM on the day of the election. So if there are any issues, they will call us. For instance, if I A to K is up before you even know that they're goes out. Everything is retained locally, so you don't lose any private and contained. Budget postcards and many other operation is very easy. We collect elections, and we do all the work. Failed street file. However, we have done it in about Little bit of notice, that would be great. Currently, like I said, these are the hood scenario. Area, off the top of my alias, East Syracuse, Manoa, which for a couple of years now.
Oh, you talked about increasing the voter turnout. How do you do that?
Yes. Well, we can identify as your parental community who's not registered, so you can get more of them registered, and that's half that.
How do you do that?
How do we do that?
Yeah.
We could, if you provide us with a listing of your parents, we drop that into your database. And then we match it, it's matched with the board database. So
And how do you get them to actually register?
Like I said, you can see which ones are not registered, so you can, you can identify all, these are our elementary parents. Setting up a table at one of the events. Or holding registration drives.
Yeah, right.
Holding registration drives, you know, on a Saturday.
But we do that. You don't do that.
No, you don't.
Yes, no, you would be in trouble.
Right.
We provide you with the data. Like I said, it does, it really does streamline everything that's done. I'm sure with the manual system, I'm sure weeks before the vote, breaking up, getting all the paperwork ready, printing your the printing of that Time is money, and like I said, it's done quickly. It is BOSI's aidable. ology.
Okay, your estimated cost here, I see for two years. What is it, the third, fourth, fifth, sixth year?
We actually have not, we have not raised our prices in eight years. Not have plans on raising our prices. That is number one. Because it's web-based, it keeps the costs down. Two years ago, we were investigating these books that we, we used to get them from Staples wholesale. And we used to get found a company down in that can give them to us for half the price. We are constantly looking for ways to keep our costs down because we realize things are getting tighter. App. And actually, I have to say, out of the 17 districts that tried to eight of them were ours, and they were all able to utilizing our system. They had no choice. They had to pierce
employees in your company?
We employ basically around 20 now. Comes around, we usually increase Most of them are technicians. We have onsite technical support. At the merge report, what you see is what you get. Some people will look at the price and say, well, Everything is included. We don't chart, we don't come in like other companies and chart consultants or anything like that. What you see is what you get. If I have to come up here six, seven You'll find a way. I'll visit other districts while I'm up here. They'll make it more for me.
My other question is, you've talked about an election. But I went online, because I like to learn a lot about new things, and you do other things.
Yes.
Is, you know, for instance, you could come in and do a census, and I've read all that data. Is that an extra cost besides the cost that we have here?
You, census, it depends on what you're looking for. Those where you can do a mail-out to your community. Get the information, and we take the data along with hospital birth data, along with marketing data, and we get a true picture. We can
So is that part of this cost, or is that an additional cost?
That is an additional product, but many districts are able to use voting, depending on what you're looking for.
Right, right.
Our voting for the census.
It's part of that.
Because the census was actually born from The census product has been available for the last five years.
How many years have you been working with FM, ESM, and West Genneese?
ESM, probably about five years. Fayetteville came on the same year. West Jenny, I think, three About five or six years. What happened was actually, five years ago, owner of our company retired. And we had no districts above Westchester County. We had about 55 districts. And his son-in-law took over, who, a little bit more of a businessman wealth, and we started going to the upstate about us. So I would say in the last five years, we've almost doubled. Because districts just didn't know Asser and Suffolk County, just by, and Lower Hudson, actually, just by word of mouth. I've been with the company for 14
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our participation in government students, come on up. We'll sign your forms for you.
Those kids had to go to work.
Hey, how you doing?
Yeah, well, you see, they're now
How you doing? Good.
Come on up. Anyone can sign him. I'm right up.
Hi, how are you today? Last chance to get your hours high.
How you doing?
I can't believe midterms and finals are coming in two weeks. Right? It's two weeks, right? Yeah. You've been dating for a while, huh? That's awesome. He's a good, he's a good
There you go. Thank you.
And he loves the Italian food. Your grandma, such a grandma. They love the Italian food. He's a good guy. He's a good guy. And you're a senior, right? Makes sure Dallas, Scotts scholarships, so. Hi, how are, you're one of the ones I was
There you go. Thank you.
That's all right.
Come on up. Sign for you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
No, thank you. You work with who? Who would teach you?
That's okay. I can sign it.
Oh, nice. Nice, nice, nice. There you go. Good luck. Where are your C and F?
A, I, E, R.
Yep, S, T, E, N. And then Stone.
One of the honors students?
You're welcome. Yes, you too.
Next week, there won't be anybody here because people won't be going for a while.
Yeah.
Oh, she's in my car. I, that's what it has to be.
I love blue hair. Especially out of 15-year-old. I love blue hair, especially out of 15. No, don't, take your time. Take your time. I just feel bad you don't have a captive audience, but take your time. Not a problem. Take your time.
How is everybody? Holidays good?
Well, yeah, I didn't see the prices already.
Oh, you'll have to sign. Do you need those?
I didn't have them on. But I mean, would it be, you know, talk to Congress?
Seven days.
Want to put on an agenda and discuss? Because it seems like Okay.
It's quiet now.
All right.
Very exclusive audience.
So now that I've picked everybody out of here, we'll talk a little about school lunch. I have been working in the school lunch field for 18, 19 years, and I can tell you that my job has changed more in this last year than it has in all of these 19 years. So we're going to go through some slides and talk about the new laws that we're dealing with this year. And at the very end, we'll talk briefly about how it's impacting our breakfast and lunch numbers. But I brought Deb Thrall with me, who is our BOSI's dietitian that works in the district once a week with us. Spends a lot of time working on allergens, as you know. It's a big problem here in this district. We're tracking multiple allergens. We do actually, on top of all these other regulations, spend a lot of time reading labels, working with parents, working with nurses. But I'll have Deb kind of go through the slides. If you guys have any questions, please interrupt us, and we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Wendy. Good evening. I'm Deb Thrall, the registered dietitian here at North Syracuse School District. And we're going to talk about the changes that have been happening in the school lunch program. And let's go on to the first slide. As Wendy had mentioned, there's a lot of regulations that have gone into effect. Back in 2010, the Obama administration conducted the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, which also took into effect the 2010 dietary guidelines, which are really the base for the change in the school lunch program due to the increasing percentage of students that have been identified as, you know, being obese. It's an epidemic over the last 30 years in the U.S., and the school lunch program has been remodified to address those issues. The proposed rule took into effect about a year ago, January 13th of last year. Actually, two years ago. I'm still in 2012. The nutrition standards in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program had different parameters that we'd been following very carefully. And again, the base is the nutritional density to make sure that these meals are higher in fiber, more nutritionally dense, providing more vitamins and minerals, and the reduction of fat, saturated fat, and calories especially. Menu changes. It's currently a one-food-based menu planning approach. Almost 20 years ago, I worked with this school district with the Nutrient Standard Menu Planning System back in the mid-1990s. And at that point, everything was identified in terms of nutritional analysis. And this still does use the nutritional analysis program that I'm using, but it also takes into effect guidelines that have to go on top of the nutritional analysis program. K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12 are the grade breakouts for the National School Lunch Program. And those are the different criterias I'm going to go into. The next slide does contain the breakfast and lunch regs. Before, there was a change recently adapted about a month ago to this day. There's no longer actually the upper limits on the breads and the meats as we currently know today. So this presentation was developed with those regulations in effect, but the government actually has identified that we're being a little too restrictive. I'm not going to ask anybody to memorize this slide. I color-coded it. The left-hand side is actually the breakfast, and the right-hand side is the lunch. And it's broken out according to K 5, grades 6 through 8, and 9 through 11. And the components that actually were the most changed were the fruits and the vegetable colors of what needs to be offered per week in terms of the color requirements according to the grade level. And then also the bread components and the meat components. And fluid milk actually stayed the same with only one minor change that I'll go into. One of the big changes was actually the fruit and the vegetable group. They're no longer in the same category for the school lunch and breakfast program. They're separated out. And of course, we're going to see fruits at both meals, and they can be offered in terms of fresh, frozen, and canned. And then fruit juice cannot be offered more than 50% of the week. So if you have fruit on your menu, fruit juice every day, you need to offer 100% of the actual fruit in order to make the 50% of the fruit juice. You can't just offer fruit juice, orange juice, every morning, and that's it. You could do that for two and a half days of the week, but you couldn't do it for the other 50%. And of course, it still has to be 100% real fruit juice. Dried fruit is more condensed, so a quarter cup of dried fruit is equivalent to a half a cup of fruit. You may see raisins on the lunch line. And at breakfast, non-starchy vegetables may also be offered in place of fruits. Vegetables, this is where the color requirement really has changed a lot. There has to be a half a cup of dark green vegetables offered at least once a week. And then 3/4 to a cup and 1/4 of the red and orange vegetables. Half a cup of the legumes, a half a cup of the starchy vegetables, and a cup to a cup and 3/4 of the other vegetables that do make up the difference to make the full amount of requirements per week. Going more in-depth into the dark green vegetables, again, they half a cup per week at lunch. And dark green is broccoli, dark green leafy lettuce, romaine lettuce, which we do offer the mix here in the school district. Spinach. Green beans are not a green vegetable. Asparagus is not a green vegetable. Only the dark green vegetables will be accepted in compliance as a dark green vegetable are those listed up here. Red-orange vegetables, they consist of carrots, sweet potatoes, tomatoes, tomato juice, winter squash. 3/4 of a cup for grades K through 8, and a cup and 1/4 per week for grades 9 through 12. But he's asked what a spoodle is.
I was about to.
I always get this It's like a spork, right?
It's a measuring device. It's got slot, it's typically slotted. These are spooked vegetables or foods out.
Ladle.
Yep, yep. Just a measuring device we use.
Exactly. A ladle spoon. Legumes, which are high in fiber, make the meals more nutritionally dense. Half a cup per week for all grade levels. So you're probably seeing more chickpeas on the salad. Pinto beans in the rice.
I couldn't get my kids to eat this stuff at home. How are you going to get them to eat?
How are you going to get them to eat this stuff? Not that it's very good for you, but...
Well, last year, they did something where they attempted...
Yep, they'll get you the chickpeas.
Yep.
Starchy vegetables, a half a cup per week, so you won't see them as often. And starchy vegetables are actually green peas, they're not in the green group or the other group, white potatoes, lima beans, and corn. And then the other vegetables are basically vegetables that do not fall into the green, dark green group, the orange group, the starchy group, or the bean group. And some of those items are identified up here. The iceberg lettuce, we actually aren't really offering at all, we're offering the romaine only. Basically, green beans, wax beans fall into this other group. We try to get the extra vegetables from the colored groups so they're more nutritionally dense, like the orange vegetables, sweet potato fries, just something that gives them more of the vitamins. Whole grains, they're a new, they're new in terms of how much must be offered. At least half of the grains currently for this school year must be whole-grain-rich. In two years, all grains offered must be whole-grain-rich. And whole-grain-rich foods must contain at least one hundred percent whole grains, no, may contain less than one hundred percent, but at least fifty-one percent.
Just to give you an idea of the whole-grain piece, our, actually, are breaded with whole-grain breading now. Yep, whole-grain crust.
And actually, whole grain doesn't just mean that it's something that it's from wheat or it's from oats. Whole grain means that it contains all three components of the grain to make it whole, which is the outer husk and the middle part, and then the very middle. Because all three components give you the essential amino, or essential fatty acids as well as the insoluble fiber. So, combining those together. So, if you have something that says multi-grain wheat, it's not whole grain unless it's multi-grain whole wheat. It has to have the word "whole" in there and afford to have all three components. Just because it's multi-grain, it could mean that it's from oats, rye, or wheat, but it doesn't mean that it's a whole oats, rye, or wheat.
I was in junior high school, the lunchroom were neighborhood moms, and, I mean, baked spaghetti on Thursday, it was no different than eating it at your house. And I think, they didn't bake the bread, I think it was Colum, I think it was Columbus Bakery bread. And geez, there weren't too many of us that were obese that I can remember, and, I mean, this is...
It's a change.
Oh, yes.
And also, meet the serving size of daily requirements for the bread and grains. Meet at least one of the following, whole grains per serving are equivalent to eight grams per serving. The product indicates the FDA whole-grain health claim on its packaging, and whole grains generally are listed first, or as the heaviest ingredient. And here's the breakout of what we were following, it's in the brown, eight to nine ounces equivalents per week for whole grains for K through five, and then up to ten ounces per week for grades six through eight, and grades nine through twelve, up to twelve ounces. And you must at least supply one ounce for grades K through eight, and two ounces for grades nine through twelve. However, on December seventh, USDA has deleted the upper cap, and the upper cap has been quite the challenge in order to not go over the nine ounces for K through five. For example, a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, each slice of bread may be an ounce. So, if you offered it every day, you'd have two, four, six, eight, ten ounces, and you would have been over for the K through five level because of that extra slice of bread. So, everything's been, you know, working on reforming, formulating with the manufacturers. They've all been coming in over the summer showing us their one-ounce roll, or their one and point-five-ounce roll, or their one-point-seven-five-ounce slice of bread. So, it's been a challenge for them as well as school food service directors to meet the guidelines.
So, we've got a kid in fourth grade that's going to buy a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and say, "This bread isn't as thick as it used to be." And he's not going to be full because he's going to have a sandwich that isn't as big as it was.
That's particularly the issue at the high school, right? The high school kids are going hungry, basically.
Yeah, that's what you're seeing, I mean, you see it in the press every day, and that's part of...
Understand, but, and how much more does this all cost?
Oh, a lot.
They don't give us, they don't give us extra aid for this, though, right? All these extra costs.
Well, we're working on that, they will be giving us six cents.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, yeah, we're working on it.
We're working on that, yes, we haven't had...
Unbelievable, isn't that something?
Of course, the reality of it is, healthier food is more expensive.
And students will notice, like, the pizza slice is smaller, you know, because the manufacturers are making them lighter.
Like, when you went, go to Wegmans and get a panini, not to use that, if you ever go to Wegmans. Now, when they first came out, you couldn't eat a whole one. Because between what was inside and the bread was nice and thick and all this stuff, now, they didn't change the price, but now the bread's half as thick. So, you eat a sandwich, you eat a whole one, and you're saying to yourself, "Man, I'm still..."
Counting grains, from the previous slide, at least a minimum of one ounce, and that's for K through eight, and then two ounces for nine through twelve. Meats and meat alternatives. Again, there were upper cap limits for K through five at ten ounces, actually, K through eight at ten ounces per week. If a district wishes to choose a K eight menu, you know, again, it's the ten-ounce upper limit, and then grades nine through twelve, it's up to twelve ounces for the meat. So, there's the sam, the kids that are on sports teams, or the athletic kids, or the hungry kids, looking at that three-ounce chicken patty, or looking at that three-ounce sub, and all of a sudden, it's getting less meat because you can't offer three ounces per day. For example, in the high school, because you're, would be three ounces over of the twelve.
I mean, let's let a fourth grader sit for a ninety-minute test, and they're hungry because they didn't have enough for lunch. That costs more.
Right, hungry children cannot learn.
And I don't mean, it's not your fault, but people are watching, I think are...
We have to blame somebody.
No, I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming the people at the government levels that sit here and say, "Hmm, our kids are obese, so let's not feed them as much."
And then there's the percentage of population of kids that really rely on the lunch or breakfast.
Right.
Because they're not eating at home or over the weekend, and...
Right.
Exactly.
So, they're, they're hungry.
Going home hungry.
And they come to school, and we don't feed them, and that, they don't get the right amount of sleep, and they don't have the right, all of that.
But at the end of the day, the relief on the grains is good, right? Because that'll, that'll give them more calories. No, seriously, and then, and then the healthier food is good ultimately.
Well, I agree.
It's just a terrible transition for the kids right now because they're not used to this. This is, you know, this isn't what they would choose to eat, and so...
But again, make it healthy, but give them enough to eat so they're not hungry.
They're not getting up to the allowance for the meat and meat oil.
And the big, the big issue here is, which you'll see in a minute, sorry, I'm... Truthfully, if these kids were...
Throwing it all away.
... fruits and vegetables that we gave them. It's a big learning curve for these kids. They've eaten a lot of fruits and vegetables maybe in the past, so...
Some of them don't eat any.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, some of them have...
Well, and they eat french fry, I mean, french fries being counted as a vegetable, but that's kind of an... But it's allowed up until this year, really, and now we're...
I mean, if you want to dictate to us what we have to feed them, that's fine. You want to tell us we have to feed them more healthy, that's fine, too. But don't tell us we have to make them hungry, and don't tell them, don't tell us that you're not going to help us pay for it because it's more expensive. I mean, if that truly is an issue, you know, some districts don't have that issue, some, a lot of districts do. But, you know, I don't think there's a person in this room that feels that our children shouldn't eat healthier. But Jesus, when you're telling them that you're cutting the amount that they're eating, and they're hungry, and they're throwing what you're forcing, you can't force a kid, any of us, to have children around the table, try to force them to eat something, that's, that's a losing battle. So, I just, I don't know.
Milk did not change, it's still stated eight ounces for the reimbursable lunch, five cups per week. The only thing that did change was the flavored milk needs to now be fat-free. It used to be one percent. Burned dairy actually has the bid, and they've reformulated their chocolate milk to fat-free.
Do you think our kids, I'm just asking, do our kids eat tofu? I mean, will they, do they, I'm just asking. Yeah, but...
Small percentage.
I'm just...
I used to throw it in with other things, and they didn't know that.
So, are you going to give them Tofurkey for Thanksgiving?
Again, the meals must offer all five components. Students must at least have three components in their possession for it to be reimbursable, and it must contain a minimum portion of a fruit or vegetable of a half a cup.
What they feel.
We have to offer a say, "Hey, Jimmy, why..."
I know my daughter.
... lines this year is part of...
... as to what is the reimbursement meeting of the serving line, thank...
Takes sense.
There's a real nutrition education going on, though, with the kids that, you know, that signage is very helpful, too.
So, yeah.
Because I used to spend a lot of time on this.
A lot of the times, we'll have...
Real boxes.
Dinner gardeners...
I don't have it anymore. They get it at high school if they take health courses, yeah.
Excellent food service staff here, they really work...
Good question, it's, it's one that's been raised lots of times at our meetings with parents and whatever. Why are kids not allowed to take a piece of whole fruit back to the classroom with them to eat later, or, you know, to bring home, God forbid?
Well, that's not a school district rule, it's actually a state education department mandate. They're saying that that's part of this child's lunch, and that need to ensure that child is eating that piece of fruit.
So, they prefer that the garbage eat the piece of fruit than that the child take it home to his family?
And we kind of turn, I will say, what happens out in that cafeteria, once, the kitchen, I don't know what happens. If they take that piece of fruit in their bag, they take that piece of fruit in their bag. The very outdated regulation, and kind of needs to fall off the books. But there are, there are buildings, like the junior high school, that... Apple in the garbage or whatever, they do save those apples.
And then the sports teams come in and grab a snack before sports. So, there are some things developing that are...
But we're not going to get our hand snapped for it either.
That's relatively new, and I'm glad to hear it. It just, something that has driven me and many, many parents in this district crazy.
Yeah, and again, it's a state education antiquated rule that's crazy.
Because I believe a kid, if they're really, really hungry, and they've got an apple in their pocket, that they'll eat it later, maybe on the bus, on the way home, or...
Or, again, bring it home.
Right, or bring it home.
You know, because there are some homes that would be very happy to have that apple and not have it go in the garbage.
Big problem with the summer feeding program also. You'd be very careful to make sure the parents weren't sitting there eating the kids' food off the tray.
Geez, that's terrible.
Multiple serving lines, all the items have to be the same to ensure that they're meeting all of the requirements. So, if you have the student that just goes through the salad bar every day, or just goes through the deli line every day, then they're going to be the one, you know, you have to make sure that you have the, the different vegetables on that line, the different fruits, especially, you know, if they just dodge the hot meal reimbursement line, they just go for the reimbursable deli line. So, you have to make sure that everything's offered in every component of your cafeteria. Special dietary needs, these students are basically the PKU students, gluten-free students. Any specific diet prescription written by the physician, they're excluded from the requirements. Chloric ranges, these are the chloric ranges set forth by USDA from the dietary guidelines. For lunch is five-hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred-and-fifty calories for K through five. For a lunch for grades six through eight, it's six to seven-hundred calories, and grades nine through twelve, it's seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-and-fifty calories for the meal. Sodium is going to be coming into play in 2014. It's going to go down over the next seven years after 2014 with a reduction in the amount of salt that's provided in the meal. And just doing the analysis, the meals here are actually looking very good. We're actually in compliance with the 2014 regulations, so it's something to look at. I'm sure manufacturers will be starting to reduce this amount of salt. In fact, I'm starting to see it now in a lot of their products. Saturated fat, nothing's changed there, less than ten percent of total calories.
That looks awesome.
And there's our sandwich that we offer. No total fat standard, and zero trans fat. That's basically a lot of manufacturers that used to have trans fat, no longer have trans fat. And now, I'll let Wendy talk a little bit about the meal counts.
Okay, so what has all that fun, interesting food done to our meal counts? Basically, when we, when BOSI's came on board, Dawn and I and Louise talked a lot about, we really want to increase breakfast participation. And while the regulations that we just talked about primarily focus on lunch, we've been able to be a little more, the breakfast regulations have been a little more lenient so far. So, as, looking at this data in front of you, this is the North Syracuse trends for the last few years. And as you can see, we've been focusing on growing our breakfast program the last few months, and we are starting to see some success. We do have more students buying breakfast, which is obviously the most important meal of the day. We are hoping that this ties into better test scores for you, better disciplinary, you know, less disciplinary issues. And it's nice to see that kids are buying breakfast. We actually are seeing more of the younger students purchasing the meals, so we're hoping that this trend continues as they get into middle school and high school, and it's something that just becomes ingrained in their habits. Each, each school district kind of has a different setup depending on how early the buses do get in there. A majority of the buses will let the students off in advance because for them to go to the cafeteria, grab that meal, try to sit down and eat some, and then, you know, especially this time of year with the backpacks and the coats and the boots and the, that's an extra few minutes in the homeroom. So, they will let them off early, but it's not, it's not a standard practice, I'd love to see it, but that does involve, you know, potentially more aids and in the... Boss in the morning, and... Have that, too, in this day and age. Now, as you can see, our lunch trends are a different story, this is not as good of news. Really, these regulations are very strict. As you can see, you know, I know Louise in the past had been very careful in implementing healthy practices prior to this taking place. We all saw it coming. So, we've all been working on removing fryers, baking more products, offering more fruits and vegetables. And as you can see, our meal counts have slowly been declining over the, you know, the last few years. Of course, we are, you know, our enrollment is shrinking, but we are averaging right now about four-thousand-four-hundred meals a day. Goes up, goes down depending on the meal, but that's pretty much our average daily participation. So, it's not good news. We're hoping with these relaxed standards, we will grab some kids back, some, especially the high school kids that are hungry and frustrated.
And my concern is, what are you doing educational-wise? Louise would, one thing Louise did when things started changing, she went and talked to every staff. I think the staff needs to be aware. Their mind is on this APR, it's on things, but to me, this is just, to me, this personally, this is very important. I like to see more of that done. Your food service people are second to none in this school district. They spend the time to talk to kids. They're great. I've been to all the schools, I've seen the cafeterias, I talked to Smith Road today. They're great people, but they, their time is limited. We need to do some more nutrition education in this school district. Unfortunately, reading and math have overtaken that. Breakfast count, I know, and I have not talked to Melissa about this at the high school, but one thing I notice, the kids are rushed. They don't have a lot of time, and if their bus does come in last at the high school, they don't have enough time. That first period is starting. I know what we could do about maybe letting those kids off, I don't know, because you have supervision, but I think you could increase at the junior high and the high school with something in the morning where they have a longer time, a longer time. Elementary kids, they didn't my classroom and it didn't bother the other kids, but the high school, they really can't do that. They're off to their first period. So, I'd like you to look at maybe possibly junior high and high school, if there's something to.
It's great that you're mentioning that because that's where we have the lowest number of free and reduced kids taking advantage of that free breakfast. You know, roughly 30% of our kids are entitled to a free breakfast. And so, what we've been talking about are some grab-and-go strategies where kids can take something, a package, because the truth, they might not even be hungry when they get off the bus, but another period later, it'd be great if they had a breakfast bar or a piece of fruit or something they could eat, you know, and, you know, to keep them energized.
The lines are long. I mean, I haven't been there this year, but when I was this year with my student that I worked with, lines are long, and all it wants, the bell's off and they're off to the first period, and they're either going to eat it real quickly or they're not going to eat it, not going to buy.
And the company.
One of the companies that we use for our computer software programs, they've devised some vending machines that actually will. Now, there's some flaws in that, they're working those bugs out, but it could be something as simple as. Up near the doors.
Where the buses are.
That will be serving. Now, there's some flaws to that right now because if you know somebody.
Glad you're looking at some things because I think you can, I really think you can increase that breakfast at the.
The other thing is that travel distance from where the kids.
Yes, it's a long distance.
You know, it's a long.
We've talked about possibly, you know, leaving it open for all the study halls, using the high, or the.
And we were really, frankly, very excited about this at the beginning of the, nutrition standards that we're talking about have sucked the life out of us, and it's really, it really, it's been a really difficult challenge.
The ladies in the kitchens are exhausted and trying to.
And I have to reiterate, I eat lunch with Wendy in the cafeterias, and we do have amazing staff. They know these kids, they connect with them, they talk to them, you know, and it's amazing how they, they get them to take that extra apple or the, make sure they have a good meal, and it's very impressive to watch them. Great team of people to work with. That's true. I've eaten with some great parents.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, we have no comments from the audience this evening.
Yeah, budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting myself, getting ahead of myself.
I promised this to be a brief.
It's a psychological thing.
Brief, right. The pain of talking about the budget.
Yes.
I promised this, that this will be brief, but I wanted to, well, I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about the budget. This is probably earlier than the district has talked about the budget in the past, but, you know, as an organization, the district has been working on our budget for several months now. A lot of conversations, a lot of information has been shared, and recently cabinet, we kind of looked at each other and said, you know, there's some stuff here, even though it's preliminary, let's put that out, and we've been working with the Legislative Committee and a bunch of other people, and we just thought it was time to have a public presentation about what we know to date. And so, here are some highlights. Want to talk a little bit about revenues and expenditures, calculation of our projected budget deficit, again, very preliminary, our preliminary tax cap calculation, talk about some potential tax levy increases and related cuts, and then some budget components that are likely to change because we're so early in the process. And then we'll talk about the bright budget process timeline. On the revenue side, we're relying on the information that the governor provided last year, and, and we're reasonably comfortable that our general aid increase will be 3%. The range that they're saying is between 3 and 3.5%, but you might remember that there were some programs that you had to apply for, grant-type programs that, that were part of last year's budget. So, we're comfortable saying our increase will be about 3%. Property taxes, this based on a preliminary tax cap calculation of 3.5%, which I'll show you later in the presentation. Sales tax, I just want to remind everybody that the sales tax sharing agreement is in effect, and that'll cost us another $200,000 this year. Fund balance, in the, in the coming months, I'll be talking to the board about reserves and fund balance, and the district has done an amazing job of being good stewards of the community's money, and, and we've used fund balance where we can over the last several years, but our fund balance is limited. And last, this year that we're in right now, we use $750,000 worth of fund balance. I'm recommending that we can only use 600,000 of that next year, and that's $150,000 shortfall. Again, that's just my recommendation, again, very preliminary. On the building aid side, I mentioned it last year, we got two years' worth of aid on Smith Road last year. Well, we're only going to get one year this year, so that's $965,000 of reduction in building aid. And the other thing that the state is doing, which, which makes perfectly good sense, when you do a building project, they provide the building aid based on an estimated interest rate. Well, interest rates are at historically low levels, and the state has said, we're going to adjust those interest rates that are the basis for the aid we provide because they know that all the school districts, North Syracuse included, have gone out and refinanced our debt at lower rates. So, that's going to cost us about $180,000 next year.
As far as the estimated general aid increase at the Anadaga-Madison School Board Association Legislative Committee at that level, our president has gone to a few kind of listening session kind of things, and one in Auburn specifically, where the general feeling from SED is that there may, there may not be much of that increase because of the, of Hurricane Katrina.
Hurricane Sandy.
And having to funnel more money that way.
You know, it's interesting, we.
Have we done anything with that?
Well, we've gotten some different conflicting stories. We, when Dr. Dice and I met with John D. Francisco, and Bob and I have talked to people that have basically said, you know, they think they're going to get federal aid for Hurricane Sandy and that they're, they're going to stand by what the governor said he was going to give for general aid. But you bring out a good point, when we get to the last slide, that's one of the items that may change based on Hurricane Sandy. So, we're just going to have to hope. But right now, in the interest of making some baseline assumptions, we think 3% is a good starting point.
Well, right now, they've only gotten a third of that.
I know.
Thanks to our congressman.
I know. Yep, you're right. On the expenditure side, we've been talking about this. Health benefits are up about 10%. That's our estimate. That's the estimate from PomCo, our health benefits administrator. We're not alone in this. This is not a North Syracuse issue, this is just a national issue, and I think, you know, our, our, our team here has done a great job of trying to manage health costs, being thoughtful, and, and we're going to continue to do that, but we have to have an assumption, and it looks like 10% is a reasonable assumption. To put that in perspective, that's about $2.3 million. Retirement costs, now, current contribution rates for TRS are 11.84%. They could go as high, and we've been told they could go as high as 16.5%. That's a huge increase, but it's also indicative of what's been going on in the stock market over the last several years. The way the TRS and the ERS work is, they don't just react to the volatility of the stock market year over year, they try to look at longer trends and try to take the rate up as slow as they possibly can while, while making sure that the pension funds are fully funded. And that's one thing great about New York State is that, you know, thank God, we're in a state where these funds, these pensions are fully funded, and, you know, many states don't have that luxury, so as a result, they're not only dealing with the pressure we're dealing with, but they got to catch up on the funding. And so, while these are daunting numbers, you know, it's, it's relative to what's gone on in the stock market. The, that's TRS and ERS, they're pretty self-explanatory. Well, the reality of it is, most people that are employees of the district, once you reach your 10th year, you don't pay in at all. So, you're right, you, we laid off some of our more, less senior people, and so those were the people that were contributing to the plan. The impact of that, I haven't really heard a lot of discussion, but intuitively, that makes sense that that would have had a negative impact. I think the, the bigger issue is the stock market performance. Labor contracts, most of our contracts have had a 1% increase, so that's about 600,000. Increased debt service associated with bonding Smith Road, I want to just be clear on what's going on here. We've, you know, we basically funded Smith Road's construction on a short-term loan, and so it's like a construction loan. Well, now we got to go get the mortgage, and so longer-term rates are higher than short-term rates, and so when we do that, it's going to be, we're estimating through our advice from fiscal advisors, is it'll be an increase of about $350,000. Fuel costs, if you think about going to the gas pump, gas prices really haven't gone up. If anything, the gas prices today are lower than we have budgeted, you know, diesel and gas prices are lower than we have budgeted today. So, we feel kind of comfortable that at the today's budgeted levels, we're going to be okay for next year. Energy costs, we did a great job with shopping our energy, and we've got about a $400,000 savings that we're going to realize next year for gas and electric. BOSI's, we've had some challenges on the, on the BOSI side, and they're twofold. The first is that, as you know, we partner with BOSI's for our special education, and I'm working with Val de Florio to better understand those costs, but once, once a child goes to BOSI's, you know, obviously, they provide the services that they feel are needed, and we've seen a pretty significant increase, budget over budget.
Bless you.
When we look at our, our BOSI special ed costs budgeted for the 12, 13 year, the year we're in right now, we budgeted less this year probably than we should have, you know, and that's not any, any error, you just don't know. I mean, it's a guessing game, what special needs children you're going to get, what services they're going to need, you know, where they are. So, we're a little light this year. It's, it's part of our negative variance this year is our, is our, our BOSI spending on special needs children. And so, when you look at, we're looking at a potential increase, this budget year to next budget year, of about $1 million, and we're, where that's the one we're peeling the onion back on, are really looking, looking at closely to make sure we understand that. And so, that's a very preliminary number.
We're looking at specific programs.
Yeah, we're looking, exactly, you know, like.
And I think that's important because some of them are going to give you a better bang for your buck than others, and.
Yep.
Effectiveness of the program is going to vary, too, from program to program.
That's exactly what we're doing. We're looking at those specific programs and seeing what services the children are getting and, and, you know, whether our numbers are right. The other side of BOSI's is, you know, their costs are going up by the inflation rate, you know, they're going to, their people are going to get increases and whatnot, so, you know, we're expecting another $200,000 of increase there in BOSI's. Again, our BOSI's budget is not finalized yet, it's very preliminary. The other two items I'm going to mention, the costs associated with APR and Common Core. We, we don't have, we don't have an estimate of what those are, we just know that our teachers, our administrators are working very hard right now to, to do everything they can, particularly as it relates to APR. And at some point, we got to kind of step back from it and say, hey, you know, are there adjustments that need to be made, and might they cost us money? The other one is, from a security perspective, in light of what, what took place in Connecticut, we have a comprehensive view of our, review of our security going on, and I can, I can guarantee you that we're going to be coming back to the board with some specific recommendations that might cost some money. We don't have the answer to that yet, but we, we would be remiss if we did a budget presentation and we didn't say that to you. So, so what does this mean? You know, I just recapped a bunch of things, I put it on one page here for you. On the revenue side, you can see that our total revenues are going to go up about $2.6 million. On the expenditure side, our expenditures look like they're going to go up about $7.7 million. We're looking at a deficit of about $5.1 million. Again, that's assuming a tax increase at the tax levy limit, which is a big assumption at this point. So, there's lots, lots to talk about here. Tax levy limit, this is the calculation, I won't take you through all the line items, but a few of them might change, and I wanted to just comment on one for, I'll just go to the, the other exclusions line. As you remember, this formula basically calculates what the state believes is an appropriate levy for your community based on certain factors. The other exclusions line includes the ERS and TRS. If you, if your, if your ERS and TRS cost goes up more than 2%, you get to include that in this formula. Now, one thing I just told you is that the TRS, for example, might go from 11.84 to 16.5%. Well, if it doesn't, say, for example, the market has, we finished the year pretty strong in terms of the stock market, maybe that'll come in at 15.5% instead of 16.5%. Well, if that does, this other exclusions number is going to go down. The state will say, well, then you don't need to tax your taxpayers so high. So, it'll be a left-pocket, right-pocket thing, one way or another, you know, it's going to still remain that we're going to have some pressure on our, on our budget, and that we'll have to deal with. I hope I didn't confuse you with that, but I just wanted to, to explain that one line item. So, this is the calculation, again, preliminarily, and you'll see, it's our intention to do this calculation three times, a preliminary, an adjusted, as we know more information, and then obviously a final, but right now, we're looking at 3.52%. You'll, you'll recognize this chart, it's the same format as was done last year, but this just gets you, gives you an indication. I want to point out the line that says 3.5. It's, it's not 3.52, so the numbers aren't exactly the same as on the previous page, but it's about a $2.6 million, almost $2.7 million levy increase. The required cuts would be the $5.1 million deficit I just showed you. So, we've got, before the tax levy, we got about $7.8 million to deal with, and, and that's at that simple majority level. So, lots, lots more discussion that we have to have on this, but it kind of gives you a sense of where we are. So, budget components that are likely to change. We're waiting on the governor's budget. You know, I think normally, school districts wait, when we get the governor's budget, we start talking about it, but we just felt like, we know there's going to be a gap, we ought to start talking about it early before the governor's budget, just to get people thinking about the main reasons, the main components. Once we get the governor's budget, which will come out probably the third week of January, we'll tabulate that and we'll come right back to you. To Pat's point, we don't know the impact of, of Sandy on, on state aid. It could have an impact, particularly if this funding doesn't come through. Tax cap calculation's probably going to change when the TRS rates are finalized. Our tax levy for capital, that's the local share of our debt service, will change when we recalculate our building aid, as we look at our, some of our financing things that we're working on. I mentioned, we haven't completed our BOSI's budget. And then I don't want to forget that this year, we went through a process where we hired teachers and staff that weren't budgeted because we did an assessment based on the needs, and, and so, remember, those folks aren't in the, aren't in the budget for this year. So, to the extent that we hired more of those people, we can't forget about that because that's either people we have to add to our budget, it's a budget increase, or, or make other adjustments. So, I just wanted to, you know, make a point of that. The calendar, so here we are today on January 7th, we're doing a little budget process overview, we looked at a preliminary. that's at that simple majority level. So lots more discussion that we have to have on this, but it kind of gives you a sense of where we are. So budget components that are likely to change. We're waiting on the governor's budget. You know, I think normally, school districts wait. When we get the governor's budget, we start talking about it. But we just felt like, we know there's going to be a gap. We ought to start talking about it early, before the governor's budget, just to get people thinking about the main reasons, the main components. Once we get the governor's budget, which will come out probably the third week of January, we'll tabulate that, and we'll come right back to you. To Pat's point, we don't know the impact of Sandy on state aid. It could have an impact, particularly if this funding doesn't come through. Tax cap calculation's probably going to change when the TRS rates are finalized. Our tax levy for capital, that's the local share of our debt service, will change when we recalculate our building aid, as we look at our, some of our financing things that we're working on. I mentioned, we haven't completed our BOSI's budget. And then I don't want to forget that this year, we went through a process where we hired teachers and staff that weren't budgeted, because we did an assessment based on the needs. And so remember, those folks aren't in the, aren't in the budget for this year. So to the extent that we hired more of those people, we can't forget about that, because that's either people we have to add to our budget, it's a budget increase, or make other adjustments. So I just wanted to, you know, make a point of that. The calendar. So here we are today on January 7th. We're doing a little budget process overview. We looked at a preliminary tax cap calculation. Between January 22nd and February 1st, building-level staffing reviews will take place. And I'll just take this moment to mention, as you folks know, we've gone through a program evaluation process that involved our principals and our directors, and hopefully, a lot of discussions at the building level about those types of things. On February 4th, we'll do a fund balance and reserve projections with the board, and we'll share the, our assessment of the governor's budget proposal and what it means for North Syracuse. On February 25th, we'll have the initial budget and updated tax cap calculation at that time. In the March 4th and March 11th, Board of Education meetings, we'll do departmental budget presentations. On March 18th, we'll do another update. You know, hopefully, there'll be some good discussion at the board level and cabinet and district-wide, so that we can continue to inform the process with new information. We have to have our budget for BOSI's done on March 22nd. On March 25th, we'll have our Board of Education meeting, where we'll have the final tax cap calculation done, and we'll probably, at that point, be in some final discussions and deliberation. That'll go on for a couple of weeks at the board level, leading up to the adoption on April 22nd, the budget hearing on May 14th, and then the budget vote a month later from the adoption of the budget on May 22nd. That's all I had for tonight. Are there any budget questions?
Do we have harder numbers?
What's that?
I said, we'll wait until we have harder numbers.
All right. That's very wise.
Great job. Thanks, Don. Very good. Very comprehensive. Thank you.
See you next Tuesday.
Okay. No comments from the audience this evening. Do we have any board committee reports? Sandy, Bob?
I'll see. I guess I piggybacked on our assistant superintendent, but next week will be the legislative meeting. I believe it's next Tuesday, Connie, am I correct? It's at 6 o'clock. But I would like all the board members to know, and we've gotten some information from Connie, and I'm sure she's going to be asking for RSVPs this week, that on the 26th, Saturday the 26th, at Liverpool High School, I believe it's from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00, will, I believe that'll be, Mr. Timms will be there. As Don and I went to Keoga County, this is going to show what North Syracuse looks like compared to other schools in the state. So it's a very good presentation. And the other one that you probably want to put on your calendar, I believe, Connie, it's February 9th, I'm not sure about that, the breakfast at West Hill from 8:00 to 11:00, and that's where our legislators are there, and you get to meet, and they get to discuss with us our concerns. So those are two meetings that everybody's inviting, invited to. So I want people to know about those two.
We have our policy committee meeting next Monday, the 14th, after our executive committee meeting.
Okay, cool. Anybody else with a comment? Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah.
No, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, is that a typo?
It's the 21st.
Yeah, it's the 21st.
It's May 21st.
Don't wait too many more here.
It's May 25th. I had some comments, but no.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just some positive things to go along with Dr. Dyson and so forth. The junior high had a art show that George and I went to on Saturday, up at the Mexican Restaurant in Cicero. And these are students that have done some photography, and they had their pieces all up in the restaurant, and we could purchase one. And...
Did you do that?
I did.
Oh, good.
But anyway, I thought it was neat that it was brought out into the community, our students, what they've done in art and photography. So that was a great event.
And actually, we're going to have some of those pictures hanging here at Central Office.
We can buy?
Lots of them. I'm not sure if you can buy...
I think almost all of them sold.
But maybe...
They're sold?
I think a lot of them sold. The other thing...
Coming to the office, we have a nice selection.
But our kids do amazing things in our, the junior high and high school. The other thing was, and it was Friday night, our boys' basketball game, and Pat, George, Kay and I were there, and it was packed. It was standing room only, because the boys at the elementary level had a foul shooting contest. And Smith Road won for the first time in the history of this contest. And Kay and I went to the ceremony this morning, where they were presented the trophy. And I just think that's an awesome program. And the thing that impressed me was that every phys ed teacher was there at the elementary level. Every phys ed teacher was there rooting on their schools, their kids, and the JV team were the ones that were getting the rebounds. So it was a really school-wide event that...
Wasn't even just elementary-level phys ed teachers. There were phys ed teachers from...
Oh, yeah. You know, but every elementary was there, because it was elementary students that were involved into it. All right. Now we go to the concern things. And I am concerned about class sizes. Okay? So I'm just going to give this information to the administration. I'm going to start with the elementary level, and at Roxborough Road Elementary. That's probably because I'm there, and I'm working with students in this classroom. But at our kindergarten levels, in the afternoon, we reduced, the school board reduced, over the summer, a section of kindergarten, and there are up to 24 students in each section. And because I work with each section, I noticed the students, they're very low academically. I know the morning kindergarten sections are smaller. I know that happens in our district because of busing and neighborhoods, but I'm really disappointed in the class size at Roxell in the PM. And I'm working with four students that are really on a three- to four-year-old level, and for that teacher to do the kinds of things she can do with 24. But Roxborough was here. They do magnificent things. They have the seventh-grade students come in to work with those kids, which is really great. And they have the ALF program, which is really good. And what I've noticed also is parent participation. But I do feel the classroom teacher is responsible for that, and have 24 students. It's just not right. The other part I have very good concerns about is at the high school level. And again, I'm pretty sure it's the same way at the junior high. We were giving class sizes back about two months ago at the high school, and majority of them are very, very high. I don't know how a social studies teacher, or a Spanish fourth teacher, or can deal with 31, 32 students. And my real concern is safety, and that's in science, and that's in chemistry class, where one chemistry class is 27 students, and they're using flames. So I just have a concern about it. I know we need to look at the scheduling next year. I just want to update it now, so that we start, you know, now. Don't wait to June, July, August, because I know we reduced DAF, but there's got to be a way that we can somehow look at the scheduling, when one teacher is 17, another has 31 or 32. So I don't know if we could do a little work on class size, get back to me. I would appreciate it. That's it.
Who else? Time for Dyson. Okay. Routine action items, A, B, and C. Are there any questions or discussions on items?
The only thing, can we have an explanation just for the record as to why we chose to have that?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Definitely. Reason we chose to have that meeting is due to the fact that it was an important vote, which dealt with getting the contract ratified, so that we could get moving right away on APR, because that signature from the president of that union was needed in order to complete that process and submit our application. Due to the fact that we have two board members that weren't going to be here for tonight's meeting, and because of the importance of that vote and the fact that they wanted to be there, we scheduled that meeting for when all nine of us could be here, so we would have everyone here. That was the reason for the early... Aside from the fact that getting it done early, I think, was instrumental in getting us approved. I mean, had we not did it that night, we would have...
It wouldn't be approved by now.
It wouldn't be approved by now, and the closer we get to that deadline, or the closer we were approaching that deadline, the more tenuous things could become. I mean, as it is, we had to go back a couple, three times, four times. So it's, but basically, we wanted, all of the board members wanted to be present for that vote, and we wanted to get that. That was the reason. Thanks, Pat. Any other issues or questions? Motion to take the three items as a group. Sandy, second George, recommended action is to approve A, B, and C as submitted. All in favor? And that's unanimous. First discussion, action item is to approve the lead evaluator. Did someone just want to...
I'll speak to that.
Annette, you want to go through that just real quick?
At a recent meeting, you approved quite a lengthy list of all the administration in terms of being certified to evaluate teachers, and then a smaller group certified to evaluate principals. We have one additional name, Dawn Walczynski, to approve tonight. She was hired partway through the training, so she had to attend a different training session, and has done that, and has gotten the results, and so we need to approve her.
Recommended action is to approve the above resolution as submitted. Motion, Bob. Second, Michael, Michael DiNaprio. I don't have to say that tonight, because there's only one here.
Not the same mic.
All in favor? And that's unanimous also. Annette, you might as well just discuss the recommendation to create three food service helpers.
Correct. This is a recommendation to create three part-time food service helpers. They will be assigned to Cicero Elementary School, Lake Shore Road Elementary School, and Smith Road Elementary School, and it has to do with assistance with the table washing.
I do have a question, and why this wasn't extended to the middle school also. Why did we keep it to...
You don't want to ask.
The elementary schools, and why we didn't...
You know, truthfully, I'm glad you asked the question. We, I'll give you the short version of this. We looked at the table washing at, obviously, all the elementary schools and the middle schools, and the truth be told, at the elementary school level, we had some mixed results, depending on the age of the kids and the quality of the table washing. And we spent some time with the health and safety folks at BOSI's, and obviously, with our food service people. And we obviously want to make sure that our tables are clean, because we don't want there to be a spread of germs. The work that's being done at the middle school, the kids get it, and they're, they do a good job. They're old enough to do a, you know, warm soapy water cleansing of the tables. And we felt that our priority at this point was to fix the elementary school thing, and we'll circle back to the middle schools and take a look at that again. But it wasn't, everything we saw, and I've eaten there, and witnessed it myself, and it seems to, the program there seems to be working better than it was working at the elementary schools.
Okay, then my question two is that, what do you use on the elementary? You're just using soap and water?
Yeah, that's a, all right, so...
Because that's my concern.
Well, here's what is recommended to be used, is soap and water, whether adults do it or kids do it. I had this brainstorm that we would try to use Quantenere disinfectant. And it's all environmentally friendly. I was told by people, you could drink it, and you wouldn't get sick. And so I thought, oh, this is a great idea. Well, I went to BOSI's, and BOSI's said, no, you can't have kids using Quantenere disinfectant. So we, because it has, needs contact time, you know, there's really, there's a proper application and use of those products. They said, every study they've done shows that those tables should be washed with soapy water, because what we do is, we disinfect those tables in the morning, and we disinfect them again at night. So before use and after use, they're disinfected with a Quantenere disinfectant by an adult, by a janitor. And so the interim cleaning, soapy, warm soapy water is the best product to use for interim cleaning, and that's what's happening in all of our schools, adult or children. We just felt that the, God bless the younger children, they put their heart into it, and many of them did a great job. It just, it was just not quite as good as we'd like to see, particularly when you had a bad flu season already. You know, we're concerned about those type of things, and we just felt by having adults do the cleaning in the elementary schools, we would be a much better...
Okay. And my add-on thing, which really doesn't have anything to do with this, but my other concern is the cleaning of the classrooms at night. When I was teaching, it was changed drastically, in that we didn't worry so much about, how could I say, cleaning, but it was about the germs, and I would be there at night marking paper, so I would watch what they were doing, and they did a great job. Is that continuing on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, you know, as we get into the flu season, there's just a higher level of awareness. I mean, John and the team are very attentive to making sure that these are healthy, safe environments for our students.
Thank you.
Who else? Hey, recommended action is to approve that resolution. Do we have a motion? Sandy, second George, all in favor? Acknowledgement of gift. The Lake Shore Road Elementary School PTO agreed to fund the materials and installation of a traversing wall for the gymnasium. The approximate cost for this project is $9,300. Our PTO's are very, are very important to us, and they do provide us, in many instances such as this, with funding to do things that sometimes our budget can't, and we really appreciate what they do for us, and the funds that they donate and the help that they give. The recommended action is to accept with gratitude the gift of a traversing wall for the gymnasium at Lake Shore Road. At, second Mike, all in favor? Item D is to, a motion to amend the 2012-2013 district calendar. It says that June 11th should be indicated as Regents' exam day on the calendar. Is there any questions on that, or...
Yeah, I have a few questions, because it concerns me, but I won't get into that at this meeting. So I'm guessing the last day of school will be Monday, June 10th, which was going to be June 11th. Is that correct? Will that be the last day for students?
The last day for students.
Yeah. Will June 10th be the last day instead of June 11th? Okay. We won't, state aid or anything, that will not be affected? Okay. Dan, can you get to me and tell me what Regents are going to be on that day? I'd like to know personally. Not down the road. Can you get back to me?
Yeah, as soon as we...
Okay. I'd just like to know why they extended one day. Thanks. In the Friday letter? Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Recommended action is to approve the amended 2012-2013 school calendar. George, second Sandy, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Annette, item E is the recommendation to create a per diem substitute trainer position. And that stems from the discussion that we had, what, two meetings ago?
Right. Well, and we put it in the...
And plus, we had an issue here.
Right. This past Friday, we put it in the Friday letter.
Yes. Go ahead, Annette.
Okay. Hopefully, you all had a chance to see the reason for this in last week's Friday letter. Back in September, you created one substitute trainer position, and the provision was, that person was only to be used if one of our regular trainers was absent for some reason. Mr. Banarski contacted me midweek last week to let me know that one of the trainers was going to be absent, but our backup, one substitute, had a prior commitment, and we really didn't feel it was right to leave the event without a trainer. So he was able to move quickly, and we're asking you tonight, after the fact, to create the substitute trainer position, and also on the personnel agenda, to approve the person that I gave the go-ahead to work last Friday evening to cover the event. Trainer currently working in the Salve School District, so she saw the requirements. So little odd sequence of events, but we felt it was best to do for the safety of the student.
Question?
You want to go first? Go ahead. You go first.
Go ahead, George.
There's two people that are... How does that go, and who gets called?
I believe either of them can be called, but I think that Mr. Banarski's intention is to still use Mr. Brown and only use this person as a secondary backup if needed.
My question, can you do me a favor and keep track of the number of times that we do this?
is to still use Mr. Brown and only use this person as a secondary backup if needed.
My question, can you do me a favor and keep track of the number of times that we do this? Because I think we need to look at it as a budgetary...
The number of times we use a backup?
Yes.
Backup or?
Yes, use the backup.
Either backup.
Yeah, because that would be someone that we use for something extra because we needed the coverage.
Right. That's what I want to know how many times, because that was, you know, is it going to be 10 times, 20 times, 30 times? You know, I want...
Certainly, we can get that.
Just keep track of the number of times.
Right, or is it just four? I mean, we, we would want to see that.
I'm under the impression it's quite infrequent, but we can certainly get you that as we go through.
Yeah, that's what I think it's going to be, but can you just keep it for us? Thank you.
If she be...
Well, the answer to that is yes, we would be able to. That's why, this is not like hiring teacher subs where we can just add people on. With civil service, you need a roster slot for every single position you create. So, now that you're creating the second one, yes, if for some reason she or Mr. Brown decides they don't want to do this anymore, we won't have to come back to you to create another slot, we would only have to come back to you on a personnel agenda to appoint It will be okay with civil service because you're going through all the motions that you need to go through.
Recommended action is to approve that resolution. Motion, second Michael, all in favor? That's unanimous. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items A and B?
I don't need executive session, I have a question.
Okay. Question?
Their instructional, volunteer, best...
Those winter coaches, yeah.
Can we get it listed of what sport they're going for or what they're going to do?
Can amend that on the next, we can amend that on the next board agenda, it should have been...
So, we know what sport they're in or what they're going to do?
We don't know what sport.
Anything else? Can I have a motion to take A and B as a group? Sandy, second George, before we vote, I'd like to just acknowledge a retirement. Deborah Palumbo, a food service helper at Roxborough Road Middle School, retires with 21 and a half years of service with the district. We congratulate her on her retirement and wish her well. Recommended actions is to approve A and acknowledge B as submitted, all in favor? That's unanimous. I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the district's directors bargaining unit and to review the personal record, personnel record of one individual with action to follow. Do we have a second? Michael, all in favor?
Yes.
Yep. All in favor? It's unanimous and we adjourn.
It was an interesting meeting, it was good.